All right then. I'd like to bring a change to the agenda with regards to an item that was discussed in a closed meeting, pegged under item 5.2, with regards to previous decisions concerning Facebook Clarence Rockland page. I believe we need two-thirds of the vote to go ahead with this. All those in favor then? All those in favor? Thank you. Are there any announcements? Well, are we making additions? None except from those, so we'll have to reconsider the agenda. Given the modification, as well as other items that had already been posted for additions? Fine. Any announcements? Mr. Mayor? Well, I had the opportunity this weekend to attend Mrs. Chouagnan's award, attend volunteer supper, supper that was offered to celebrate volunteerism. Bouchette is a very vibrant community and volunteers are quite important in any municipality. We thought about organizing something of note to celebrate volunteer endeavors, volunteerism. Let me tell you that in Bouchette, they had an event capped off by a supper and volunteer couple of the year. Mr. and Mrs. Boucher, I believe. Yes, they they gathered something like $31,000 that was redistributed throughout the community, I believe. This money stemming from skateboard activities held in Rockland sent to Bouchette to help out in their skateboard activities. And the balance was siphoned off to a park project. So and given also to the recreational committee so that they could improve the look and the structure or the existing structures within the park in Bouchette. I believe Joy's parents were there to take care of the presentation. And once again, Monique La Roche, Madam Mayor, we call her Madam Mayor, did very well and things went off quite well. Saturday night, of course, there's a volunteer supper in Clarence Creek. Yes, of course, Mr. Mayor. Similar to what was held in Bouchette, there will be also an award given to volunteer or volunteers of the year. There's also a meeting at the Boston Pizza to honor Mr. Lallon. He'll be the recipient of the Order of Canada, I believe. It bodes well for the Order of Canada. Did I say an order of something else? I apologize. So congratulations, Councilor Lallon. Anyways, it's going to be on the agenda for that day's particular meeting. Any other announcements then? Any other announcements? Well, that's fine. I believe that the Saint Pascal de Belen carnival starts, I believe, on the 26th of January and will run right up until the 31st of January. There's also the Clarence Creek, Clarence, that's starting off on the 12th of January, I believe. Yes. I received an email to that effect just tonight. Any questions? Your name and address, please. Roland La Bonté. I represent Bouchette. La Bonté. 1073 Roland Road. And I'm wondering what's happening with the tree situation. Well, I've already told you, sir, what's happening with this. Now, from a legal standpoint, we've we've looked into this situation from a legal standpoint. Now, the onus is not upon us to discuss this with you here tonight. Well, the trees were cut by Mr. Marandot. Well, as things stand right now, it's in the lawyer's hands and it doesn't be who wants to talk about this. Who is, which lawyer? Sharon Landaua? Well, do they represent the taxpayers or my daughter? Do they represent taxpayers or the city of Clarence and Rockland? And who are they paid by? Well, you know how things work. Well, I know. My daughter is hiring a lawyer and it's going to cost her fortune and a half to take care of this here. Sir, Mr. Lebonté, hold on a minute. We're going to stop discussions on this. Well, I have three questions to ask. Sir, sir, we're going to stop this right away. This matter is in the lawyer's hand and that's where things end. So I'll have the right to recuperate the money spent this coming spring. No, no, I'm not discussing with any lawyer. We've finished talking about this, sir. I had occasion to talk with Mr. Lebonté and Monsieur Simonov yesterday. We well, do I have the right, the right to take gravel from the road and spread it onto my yard then? As you said in Saint Pascal, as you did in Saint Pascal. What do you mean by that? Well, look, look, I asked right here and now and you told me that this gravel had been contaminated. Sir, the contractors had spread it where they were told to spread it. Mr. Lebonté, if you were here to talk about silly things like this, to deal with silly things like that. Sir, I'm addressing my town council. These are things that occurred five years ago and you're not going to bring that back in front of town council tonight. Third question. You're, we're up to your third question. At La Roche, La Roche Lande now. I'd like to obtain any, if any, answers with regards to La Roche Lades. That was brought back for further discussion the next day. This is what Mr. Gibaud had told me. And when I came up to town council the next day, Mr. Marandot told me that he would not touch my daughter's land. And that was not even on the agenda for further discussion, you know, with regards to this. Well, my daughter wants to know why they circumvented the existing regulations because the environmental people got mixed up in that. But Mr. Marandot is aware of this situation. He's not here right now. Well, sir, I'd like to obtain answers. Well, have you got an answer for? Well, Dave might come up with something written with regards to this. Well, sir, you said there were no legal documents with regards to this. I had another question. Sir, you had three questions. Well, look, I have three minutes. There was $15,000 that was set aside to settle the tree-related matter. What tree-related matter? Well, the ditch that was dug beside my daughter's property and Mr. Gibaud told me that it was $15,000 set aside to take care of this. Well, you will have to take a look at the minutes with regards to this particular well, look, we'll have to take a look at this because he, someone enacted inappropriately. Sir, this is something to be discussed with the lawyer. I'm not going to talk with any lawyers because I was stolen by the justice system. I was I was really swindled by Mr. Carrera and Mr. Guit. Sir, let's not slander anyone here tonight. Look, is the law applied equally for everyone? Mr. Lebonté, please sit down. Well, hold on. You'll, you'll have to throw me out, sir. I don't need any police officers and you'll need the police to do that. You think you can intimidate me? I never said that, sir. I'd just like to obtain answers to my questions. I've told you. Ask your questions to the lawyer and he'll give you answers. Sir, discuss that with the lawyer and no one else. Well, the construction department compels us to hire an engineer now to obtain a permit. Sir, let's not talk about permits, Mr. Lebonté, because I'm the one that negotiated alongside with you to obtain permits for your daughter. And let's not go there. Well, that's the first thing that needs to be handled by the Department of Construction here is that we need an engineer. I came up with an engineer's plan. Sir, that's well done and passed, Monsieur Lebonté. No, 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 no. Sir, the final inspection has not been conducted yet. Mr. Mayor, can I move that we suspend until we restore orders? Sir, just address yourself. Just knock on the construction department's door and you'll obtain answers. Sir, Mr. Marandot has the answers for me. I do not have any answers for you. Fine. That's it. Anyone else have any other questions? Well then, that's fine. I'm sorry. Is this matter in lawyer's hands at present? Yes, it was sent over. If this individual is represented by a lawyer, Mr. Lebonté, please sit down. The last time that I dealt with Mr. Marandot, I was told that the city was represented by a lawyer. Now you're telling me that it is not. Well, stop lying me, lying to me like this. I didn't come here to be lied to. That's it. I've had my fill of this. Have a seat, sir, and calm down. You're old enough to understand how things work. Yes, I'm old enough. Where are you able to rely on lies continuously as you're doing right now? I've been harping on the Freedom Road issue in Wendover for the past 15 years. They did the same thing. They caused damage on my property and the lawyers, you know, took money from my bank account after the judge handed down a particular decision. Well, I believe that he should get involved in a meeting with those involved and see what's what. Because Mr. Now she's not aware of this particular matter at this point in time. He has recently been hired by the city of Clarence and Rockland. I can't remember relying on my memory as to what happened a few years ago. Well, look, just bring all of those documents that you have on hand so that you can discuss matters with these people that are concerned, are involved in this particular issue. It's difficult for us to blindly go about. Well, look, the last time that we dealt about this tree-related matter, it cost people $800. Look. Well, you can come to us when we're, we have occasion to summon you and then show up. Well, sir, hopefully you'll have an answer. We might not have an answer for you. And when the file will be pulled out and dealt with, the gentleman concerned will phone you up, we'll hold a meeting and then we'll have, we'll come up with answers. Fine. Well, I'm not going to wait another six months. All right, let's go on now to item 9.1, mailboxes. I'm sorry. Well, we're dealing here with changes brought about to previous resolutions. Whereas the city of Clarence and Rockland adopted on the 21st of December 2015 policy ELF 2015-63 with regards to mailboxes and whereas the policy needs to be modified to include a notice that need, needs to be forwarded to residents prior to any modifications. Were, be resolved that town council adopt the mailbox new mailbox policy as amended, including that a notice must be given to taxpayers prior to the commencement of work with regards to road maintenance. Any questions then? All those in favor? This had been discussed previously. Yes. Let's go on now to item 9.2, modification with regards to prior decision with regards to Facebook, whereas we adopted policy policy in December with regards to the use of Facebook page for the use of the city of Clarence and Rockland. And whereas we are promoting the use of one Facebook page and whereas firefighting services requests the use of its own Facebook page to promote prevention, fire prevention measures. As a result, be resolved that town council adopt resolution COM 2015-01 to allow firefighting services to promote firefighting, fire prevention methods. Let's just ensure that there is a link though on the city of Clarence and Rockland's page that brings users also to the firefighting services of Facebook. Just a question. We discussed this previously and we said that it would be incumbent upon the management communications officer or the communications officer to manage everything. I would say then that if we adopted this particular resolution, that all department heads should have access to the firefighting Facebook page. Well, we're limited to a firefighting services Facebook page and a corporate services page. I'm not talking about any additional pages. I'm just stating that all department heads should have access or should have the option to manage the content. Just in case the communications manager is absent. All department heads should have access. I'm not saying that they will go on that site and modify anything, but it's my opinion. Well, to update things as quickly as possible. That's right. You see, there are four that have access to this, you see. Mrs. Chaptora with a backup already has access. We don't need four separate individuals that need separate access to modify the contents of Facebook. Well, that's right, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Chaptora is in charge of performing maintenance on this page and in case she is absent, it might be wise to name individuals just in case three other individuals are absent. We're not talking about three or four individuals taking care or of the content of the, of these Facebook pages simultaneously. It's this measure is used as an alternative in case people are absent. Well, I don't understand why department heads, for example, if Mr. Boucher wishes to paste something on our Facebook page, why does he have to, why can he not do this on his own instead of going through you because it complicates matters? Well, the Facebook page is only an extension as to what exists right now communication-wise in between the city of Clarence and Rockland and the its taxpayers. Everything that is published in the official and or other media go through our communication department. So it's an extension of this proviso, if you wish. We've already in the past requested individual departments to send to division or other media their own advertisements, but we don't have a global overview as to what's going on. Corporately speaking, we're not aware as to what has been published or sent out for publication. So it's more difficult to manage relying on what was done in the past, of course. Councilor Chouagnan. Does information need to be disseminated simultaneously in both languages? Yes, yes. Well, certainly on the webpage, Facebook page, yes, of course. This has to be published in both languages. As soon as someone puts in information, it needs to be posted in both languages. Councilor Lallon, I believe that we should only approve what has been approved at present. And if we need to bring about any changes, we can revise or revisit that issue as needed. Do we have someone to second this particular motion? All those in favor that carried. Well, that's fine. Let's go on now to consent items. Yes, Mr. Mayor, consent items then. I would like that the following item 10 sub A and 10.3, those well, there are no items labeled 10.3. Well, 10.1 or 10.3A, that's how it appears on our agenda anyways. That's how those appear on. So are we going to deal with 10.3? Yes. Well, I'd just like to withdraw a resolution with regards to 10.1. Well, 10.1 deals with the adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 21st, 2015. Well, and the other item I'd like to withdraw for individual, a discussion is 10.4. 10.4 then. Be resolved that all items that are identified as consent items appearing on the agenda at this regular meeting of town council of January the 11th, 2016 be adopted. Item 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the regular, well, we're skipping over that one. All right, 10.2, the following items as recommended by the Committee of the Whole. A, to separate the township of Oro Medante regarding a review and update of the fees provisions in MFIPP-A and in Ontario regulation 823. Item 10.2 sub B, to support the city of Hawksbury regarding the boundary limits on the Ottawa River and increase in number of tip-ups. And 10.2 C, to authorize the payment in the amount of $114,159.70 to Sinex Construction and withhold the amount of $28,539.95 until completion of work in spring 2016 for the Hammond Tennis Court. Let's go on now to item 10.3, to accept the resignation of Mrs. Miriam Royal-Livek as a member of the Cultural Advisory Committee, segmented by Suzanne. All, any questions? All those in favor? Carried then. Let's go on now to item 10.1. Yes, adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 21st, 2015. Right, that's right. I just had one question with regards to the minutes. Mr. Mayor, page 73 of the minutes states, well, alludes to those dogs that attacked and killed alpaga sheep. Now, were letters sent to the dog owners to that effect? Yes, yes. We haven't received any response yet, but letters have been sent out. Yes, well, that's fine then. So I move that we adopt and accept item 10.1 then. All those in favor of adopting the minutes of the regular meeting of December 21st, 2015? That's fine, carried. Let's go on now to item 10.4, hiring an administrative assistant for the infrastructure and planning services. Well, the question I do have, Mr. Mayor, is this with regards to item 10.4, if you take a look at page 67. Page 67. Yes, that's right. Let's take a look at page 67 here. Beat resolve that town council accepts the hiring of Mrs. Chantal Joudouin as an administrative assistant in effect as of the 12th of January 2016 and that this individual be subject to probationary period for six months and also be resolved that Mrs. Chantal Joudouin's salary be pegged at level three, class eight of the salary grid that has been implemented for unionized employees as recommended. Now, the question that I had with regards to this, Mr. Mayor, is this. Did we get the name wrong because the organizational chart states Chantal Vachon? What? Chantal Vachon? Is it administrative assistant in the planning department and then she then moved to the HR department permanently? We posted that position and Chantal Joudouin came to us through an agency and has worked for us for three months and has applied for the position and won the competition. Now, it's very clear now, Mrs. Corrier, I accept that explanation. I thank you very much for this was an internal competition and external or an external. Well, it was both internal and external. And the person that we want to hire in infrastructure, do we not have someone that's currently on sick leave? Well, we have two positions because well, I would have given this explanation to you in a closed meeting. Well, we can discuss other matters in closed meeting, but I just wanted to know if we could replace one or the other. Well, we just are filling a vacant position at present. The person on sick leave would be replaced by someone temporary. Well, again, the question that I had with regards to the mistake in the title, it was was it Joudouin instead of Vachon? That's right. So segmented by Councilor Guirimao to adopt item 10.4. Fine. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lallon had withdrawn an item at the very beginning. When a question arises with regards to the minutes to be adopted, all we need to do is to withdraw something that has been written in the minutes previously. Well, do we have to take out the resolution to deal it, deal with it exclusively? Well, for example, Mr. Mayor, if you wish to modify an item or detail, well, we don't have to withdraw that item from the list. If you have any questions with regards to a follow-up, this can be done in the Committee of the Whole. Well, we're now in the midst of regular meeting of town council. I just don't want us to take out individual items ad nauseam, if you wish, Mr. Mayor. Well, that's fine, fine. Let's go on now to item 12, bylaw, Councilor Guirimao. Well, be resolved that the following bylaws be adopted. 12.1, 2015-160 signage by law. 12.2, 2016-01 to authorize the signature of an agreement with the Ministry of Transportation with regards to the allocation of the provincial gas tax to municipalities for the public transit services, segmented by I believe that you added something. You added 12.3, I believe, as an additional bylaw to be to, you know, to dedicate a certain street public. Do you have that bylaw? Yes. All right. Well, let me see here. There is a bylaw that should be added under 12.3. It's drafted in English, of course, what I have here before me. Well, well, we can discuss it, but we need to add it onto the agenda. That's bylaw 2016-03. Do I need to read all of this? Because it might it, it might appear bizarre to certain individuals. Well, the, you see, the resolution was not set out because all you, well, all you have to do is to add 12.3 onto the agenda to dedicate a certain roadway as being public. Well, that's fine. That's exactly what I wanted to say. So I need someone to second this. Mr. Lallon, I'd like to identify this, of course. I'd like to discuss this. So you'll second this, Mr. Lallon? Yes. For discussion purposes, yes. Because you see, this is not included in the resolution. You read it, but you didn't withdraw this resolution to discuss it. So you want to withdraw it so that it can be discussed. They're all subject to discussion, aren't they? No. Well, this was not by consent. For, for, for bylaws, the same principle applies. If you wish to discuss a particular bylaw, you have to withdraw it from the regular agenda order, if you wish. I'd just like to ask a question with regards to the provincial gas tax, if I may. That's with regards to item 12.2. So let's just withdraw then item 12.2, right? So all you wish to do is to adopt 12.1, the signage by law. So I have Councilor Guirimao who moved that this be adopted, segmented by Councilor Sima. All those in favor? Carried. Fine then. You just wish to make a comment? Yes, I'd just like to thank the land management committee that worked very hard. I believe we attended two or three Committee of the Whole meetings. We attended those meetings and it's going to help out and it's going to help out residents and individual departments to properly manage the signage by law that has now been implemented. All those in favor then? Carried. So let's start in discussions with regards to item 12.2. I have a question here. When we're requesting grants? I remember that I'd made numerous calls in the past. You know, for example, to contact those individuals, if we have a return ticket, well, expenditures will deal expenditures with regards to going to the meeting and an additional expenditure with regards to returning from that meeting. On some particular years also, we were much lower with regards to, as compared to Emberman Gasm, with regards to our grant requests and we were obtaining less money than those two municipalities. Well, we'll look into it, Mr. Mayor, and get back to you on this then. Fine, fine. All right then. So that's... Well, just to confirm, the monies that are collected under that program go back to transit. It's helped to fund other issues that are relevant to the city as well, right? Well, the gas tax? You mean the gas tax? We wouldn't get the 260 if we did not have CRT, right? Correct? That's right. And my point is, we're not reinvesting the 260 into the transit system per se, but we might receive funds to fund other initiatives as well. Correct. The gas tax is not only applicable to the transit system. There are other programs with regards to the city, but that means that those programs are eligible. We do provide funding for CRT, but not entirely for CRT. The money that we receive is also funneled into other programs, the gas tax. But there is a separate application for transit. So they go to a separate process. And the fund that we receive from the gas tax specifically, the funds are put back into transit. But there's a whole other process for the roads and other projects. So we put a separate application in, in that case. So I'd like to clarify one thing. Yes, 100% of the money that is applied for public transit or the gas tax, 100% is reinvested in the community. Correct. You see, what happens is that the municipality reports with regards to historic experience. So ridership, the use of transit to the province and based on the use of the service, the province allocates our funds for the next year, okay? So they send us 42 or 60,000. That goes into the operating budget and goes into the cost. Not the full 260? Yes, the full 260 goes into public transit? Oh, well, when we looked at the budget, I don't think that we see that in the budget. I don't know if Monsieur Boucher will can probably have a better look at it. But the last time that I looked at the budget, transit does not receive 260,000. I believe you received an 18% grant, did you not? Yeah, yeah, I know, but I did see that figure. We can talk about it and come back with some numbers and just verify it further. Well, let me come back with a definite answer as to that. Fine, thank you very much. All right. Oh, I see that someone forgot to turn off his cellphone. We'll... In any event, we'll get back to you on this tomorrow. We'll provide answers to you. But this involves separate applications, whatever funds we get. And that... I just want to make sure that if you're saying 260, I'd like to see this 260 in transit. I can guarantee you, as Mr. Lallon has said, that this is not there. We'll look into the numbers, but I'm pretty sure it's what I'm saying right now. Well, that maybe you're referring to the part that's not paid out by the City of Clarence and Rockland. All money should be going in to try and reduce that portion. That's why I want to make sure. It's not, it's not. Well, that's what I want to know. That's right, that's what I want to know also. You wouldn't be able to use it for anything else, but I just want to make sure in light of what you're saying, that this is the case. Well, that's fine then, that's fine, fine. I believe that we'll obtain the information further on. All those in favor then? Carried, thank you. Oh, we need someone to second the motion. So Mrs. Schwanier? Yes? Now, let's... To adopt this particular resolution or bylaw? Yes, and we'll obtain the necessary information afterwards. Let's go on now to item 3 or 12.3. Mr. Lallon? Yes. Bylaw with regards to parcel of land, with regards to the municipal act with regards to dedicating public certain highways that the Corporation of the City of Clarence and Rockland hereby dedicates a portion of Syden Street and Leboite Street that described as a part of Lot C. Concession 6, Clarence as indicated, Part 1 Plan R 6-6018, Part of P I N 69047-0169, that the mayor and clerk of the Corporation of the City of Clarence and Rockland, BNR, hereby authorized to include all documents as for the said corporation and to give effect to it therefore. Segmented, Councilor Sima? Well, in light of the situation that we do have on that road, what are the impacts of designating this road as public as opposed to this current status? Well, this goes back to 1988. A piece of road that has been mentioned. I don't know the real reason, but it has something to do with the water tower that was there. So the right-of-way that goes through to the water tower, that's where the public dedication ended. So this piece of road never got to be included. And that's all it is. It's simply a technicality. It's something that should have been done way back in 1988. So it has no bearing on the current situation and it prevails as it stands right now. It was something that was discovered through title searches that were performed. Mr. Lallon, do you have any questions? Well, we don't need to rebuild. This is a street that does meet the standards set out. It's an extension of Syden Street. And as was mentioned, when this subdivision was ready to be registered, it did not take into account this stretch of property because we already had a right-of-way at the back. This, the city was never dedicated as being public. And when the subdivision is registered, it automatically is dedicated as public. But because this was not part and parcel of a subdivision plan, of subdivision, if you wish, it was not the case, you see. Now, the property is now on the verge of being transferred and this individual needs access to a public roadway. He does not have one. He does have access to Leboite, but his entrance goes on to Syden. It's only a technicality to dedicate that part of Syden as being public. We did the same thing for Raymond Street not too long ago. Councilor Levaire? Just a question to clarify matters. It came to the attention of the Land Management Committee, I believe, last year, that a similar situation had come up, well, in 2015. Or was it noted last week, I believe? Well... You mean the 2015 resolution? There was something similar with regards to this similar subject? Yeah, well, no, we received the paperwork last week, so I'm sorry. This street is built in keeping with the standards and regulations set out? Yes, yes, absolutely. All those in favor then? Carried, thank you. Right? Confirmatory bylaw? That we adopt this confirmatory bylaw as being a bylaw to confirm all decisions taken at tonight's regular meeting of Town Council? Segmented by Councilor Zant? All those in favor then? This, or 8:07 PM? The regular meeting of Town Council has been... Has ended at 8:07 PM. Thank you, folks, and we'll see you again next month.